Good evening. Welcome to the regular school board meeting of Tuesday, January 14th. We'll call this meeting to order. And if we could begin, this is our first meeting that's gone live from the cafeteria, bringing it to you with our own personnel. So, that's quite a change. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before we do board member updates, public comment? Anyone have anything? Hi.
Happy New Year. Is this on?
Yeah.
My name is Julie Cochran. I have been a resident of Hampton for seventeen years. And prior to this year, had a nine-year-old in fourth grade at Marston School. And I am here today to offer comments and opinions on the policy review that's being done later on tonight, specifically 11.1, pupil safety and violence prevention, and also 11.2, the Title VI Complaint and Investigation Procedures on tonight's agenda. And unlike previous times, I'm not going to use this evening as a forum to further, offer further commentary on our own experiences, which continue to be under federal review by the Office of Civil Rights, but instead, offer our, and share what we've learned and changes that we would recommend be taken regarding pupil safety and violence prevention in SAU 90. So, over the past year or so, we have heard a lot of discussion, a lot of comments about process, so to speak, and it's been found and determined that SAU 90 is not really great at following all defined processes. But unfortunately, having process isn't enough, because good intentions don't solve problems. We actually need to act on them. And progress really should be the result of adherence to a process when it's followed. So regardless of the SAU process, we would hope that there would be some strict adherence of current law and policies that exist in the state of New Hampshire. We would also like to see that offenses and penalties for such, whenever bullying does happen, that we all know and it's clarified what we can expect from the offender, and shared at a minimum of semi-annually to the students and all employees and administration of the SAU itself. Also, we do highly recommend and would like to see that there be a path for redemption for those that are offending those particular policies. One of the other things that we'd really like to see be included is that parents be able to freely and without intimidation of the administration discuss their children's bullying. There have been several points reported to us over the last couple of years where parents have had the civility clause of the SAU handbook used as a method of deflection and really intimidation to not have any kind of a response when reporting on bullying cases, especially when the parents are reporting beyond the first offense, as it happens. So administrators really need to learn how to deal with these rightfully aggrieved parents without constraining the critical information that is due to them, that they can share with the administration themselves. We also feel that there needs to be some kind of a law enforcement component of the bullying policy, because in some cases, those that we are aware of, the police perhaps are better trained to understand these specific threats to our children. So, having a component where law enforcement may be able to be brought in. When meeting or reporting issues, we feel that the family should have the right to record any conversation with the administration regarding these bullying offenses. And if a recording can't be accommodated, the ability for the parents to have third-party folks, observers, participate in the meetings as necessary, so it doesn't turn into a he-said, she-said kind of a situation. And as I mentioned earlier, I'm not here specifically to discuss the particulars of our issue, but John will be discussing the events, my husband, that transpired against our daughter tomorrow in the House Education Committee in Concord in support of House Bill 1335, which is an act relative to private rights of actions regarding pupil safety. Specifically, the safety and violence prevention, pupil safety, private right of action, it's RSA 193-F9, is looking to be repealed and reenacted as follows. Specifically, the private right of action permitted. So, any person aggrieved as a result of gross negligence or willful misconduct in violation of any provision of this chapter may initiate an action against a school district or chartered public school and may recover costs as well as reasonable attorney fees as the prevailing party. So, nothing in this section shall supersede or replace existing rights or remedies under any law. And unfortunately, this bill isn't going to do anything to help us within our family and our particular situation, but it certainly will help the future families and students of Hampton and across the state as we try to hold school districts accountable for their actions, or in some cases, inaction when dealing with bullying incidents. So, we advise that you take those under consideration when taking a look at the SAU policy.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Let's go to Board Committee Reports. Budget Committee, Ginny?
We will meet on Thursday at seven o'clock for the public hearing on the school and town budgets and warrant articles. Everyone is urged to attend.
And...
And it's going to be upstairs in the new auditorium.
The new auditorium. Okay. Wellness, Andrea?
No, we haven't had a meeting recently.
Mrs. Shepard, the meeting is tomorrow. We're going to have a meeting. Didn't know that.
Our School Boards Association, in a couple of weeks on a Saturday, we're going to have the annual meeting. Twenty-fifth, I think, I'm registered. If anybody else wants to go, they make a very good sandwich. Learning Collaborative, Frank?
I have nothing to report unless Superintendent has anything to add.
Rec Department, Pepper?
Haven't had a meeting yet, but I believe I'm okay in saying this. I don't think next year, the Rec Department will have a float. They're going to do something different.
For the grade?
Yeah. There was hardly anybody going and helping. It was about three people. So, it was a tough one.
I'm just going to stop for a minute. Can everybody out there hear us? Everything's good? Building Committee, I'm not sure we're going to even leave that on air for too long. Curriculum Committee, Andrea?
I think the schools are doing their mid-year assessments. I know project-based learning continues in all of the schools. Again, pretty much assessing what's happened and putting things into place to help students going forward.
Professional Development, Pepper?
Kathleen, you went... I wasn't able to go today.
Right. We had a meeting today of the committee. Just a couple of things that came out as teachers get ready for certification. We were advised by the Department of Ed that they will be reducing by $10 the cost of certification, so it will go from $130 to $120. So, I suppose that's good news, $10. We also prepared for the rest of the workshops and the half-release days for the rest of the year in terms of providing the trainings that we want, as well as the priority being team training was discussed. And we began to get ready for next year and the kinds of programs that we would, the committee would like to have for professional development for next year.
PTA?
They are in the planning stage for the April Family Dance, so they're looking for volunteers. So, step forward. They're a good group to work with, and it's a fun family event. So, get in touch with the PTA if you're interested in helping with the family dance in April.
Is that the father-daughter dance, or has it been revamped?
It's the family dance, so everyone can come. It used to be the father-daughter dance, and then it evolved into the family dance.
Strategic Plan, Pepper, anything? No?
We have a meeting in March, Pepper.
March. And Policy, Andrea and Pepper?
We met regarding the pupil safety and violence prevention bullying report, and some changes have been, not changes, some things have been added. And I think we'll talk about that later.
Yeah.
There's some additional things that have been added to make it a little more specific, a little more all-encompassing. And I think we've added quite a few things that will address a lot of the things that have been raised as concerns.
Okay. At this time, I need a motion, I guess, to adjourn this meeting. Can somebody make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Moved, Frank. Seconded. All in favor? Okay. And now, we will, I don't know if I have to have a motion, but we will...
You can move to open.
Okay. We will have a motion to open the public hearing.
I make a motion.
Moved, Andrea. Seconded. Ginny. So now, we are in a public hearing, and we have a request to withdraw $75,000 from the Special Ed Trust Fund, which was by vote of the school board on 12/10/19. So, Jessica Parsons, I know you want to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. So, last month, I addressed the school board to let them know between the months of October and December, we had an influx of about 12 student referrals, which basically means that students were referred to our preschool special education program, of which seven have already qualified and two are, within the next month, will also qualify. They qualify on their third birthday, so that date will come for two more students. With that said, with the increase of nine students, some with significant need, we need to increase the staffing, the services, and the supports in our two preschool classrooms. So, I have asked the school board to go into the, and withdraw from the Special Education Trust Fund, $75,000 to support the students and the program.
And for people who don't know, approximately how much money is in the trust, Special Ed Trust Fund right now?
I believe it's approximately $250,000?
$260.
$260.
$260,000. And that Special Ed Trust Fund is set up for times like this, correct?
Correct. Because we can't always anticipate things and students that come in, the identification of students, and because it is federally mandated that these students receive services, it's nice to have a trust fund available when certain situations like this arise.
So, any questions from people in the audience? Any questions from board members? Thank you, Jess.
Thank you.
What's that? Yeah. So, we'll ask the Superintendent to write a letter to the trustees requesting withdrawal of $75,000. Last chance for comment or questions. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
A move, yeah.
Approve Jessica's request?
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor? Okay. So, can I get a motion to come out, to adjourn the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the public meeting.
Moved, Frank. Seconded, Ginny. All those in favor? Okay. A motion to go back into our regular school board meeting. Moved, Frank. Seconded, Andrea. All those in favor? We're back into our regular meeting. It was like magic.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Lannan?
Happy New Year. As a school benefiting from the $75,000 for the students at Center School, I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. It's very, very helpful for the youngest students that we service here in the district. You've had a chance to look at my report. As you know, as Andrea pointed out, very busy with professional learning that's going on, opportunities for staff embedded throughout the day. We're also doing a great deal of servicing for students in all levels and differentiating our needs to make sure that proper learning is going on. January's an awesome month. We have a great stretch, as long as we have no snow. It's a great chance to see things really grow at Center School with the young ones. It's when they really start to take off. So, it's an exciting time at Center School right now. So, we're excited. Any questions?
I should think that that Lego club would be a real hit.
It is a huge hit. We have about two-thirds of each grade level participates and stays after school. It's a great, tremendous hit.
Wow.
Thank you to the PTA volunteers who run that organization. It's fabulous. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Lannan? Okay.
Have a great night.
Thank you, Tim.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I think you had a chance to look at my report. Obviously, we've got some great things happening at our school that continue. Obviously, so very proud and pleased of the announcement in January with regard to Mr. Nathan Sadler being...
Can you talk about that?
Yes.
Because we're on TV live.
Yes, I'd be happy to. So, back in September, October, the New Hampshire Association of School Principals in the state does seek out assistant principals that they think would be worthy of the honor of being named the Assistant Principal of the Year. And there's a criteria that's pretty clear in terms of who you can nominate, who you can't nominate. And obviously, thinking about Nathan, who has entered his seventh year, and thinking about the work he's done in curriculum, in math, and science, and the lead that he's taken on our GROW grant as the administrator, just seemed like the perfect person to nominate. So, I did write a letter of nomination to the New Hampshire Association of School Principals. And what happens as a result of that is they do review those letters, and they then seek out those candidates who they'd like to go forward, and they ask that they apply. So, he was asked to apply, which is a pretty rigorous process, where he has to get, not only, he has to complete a number of essay questions, he also has to have parents speak on his behalf, students speak on his behalf, the Superintendent spoke on his behalf, and a number of staff and community members, stakeholders, that all spoke on his behalf. And he actually is applying to be a distinguished administrator, a nationally distinguished administrator. Correct, Nathan? So, he's still in the running for that, but he was named, they do do a site visit, so they review the applications, they wean it down, they do several site visits. And we had a morning where they came and they met with a number of panels. And then, just before we departed for the holiday, he was, it was announced that he was their indeed frontrunner, and he was selected as the Assistant Principal of the Year for our state. So, it's a tremendous honor. So, he's in the process of working on his application so that he can hopefully be in the running for being a nationally distinguished administrator. So, we're keeping our fingers crossed. But it does mean that he has a number of celebrations that will come forward, including the Eddies, including their annual conference, the New Hampshire Association of School Principals Annual Conference, as well as the Annual Conference, which will be at the end of the year, in July, in Louisville, Kentucky. So, he will be honored in June and July at all of these awards and ceremonies. So, we're just so pleased and proud of having Nathan Sadler as our Assistant Principal, the work that he does every day on behalf of our students and staff and families. And as his colleague, I couldn't be prouder. So, congratulations, Nathan. So, that's really our big, that's our big news on top of, obviously, just staying the course, and kids are working hard. If anybody had a chance to see our wonderful original production by Gus Carlson, What's the Point of the Holidays?, which was an integration of music, dance, and of course, math, as we think about the holidays. And I know that our fifth graders love this. It is just a annual tradition where every student, every fifth grader, has a part in this performance, whether it is singing, it is dancing, it is speaking, it is props, it is lighting. And we had it here at Hampton Academy. Thank you, David, and Hampton Academy. So, just a great, great time. And as you said, Mr. Lannan, we are, we are in the throes of curriculum at this time, and we are doing our mid-year assessments and monitoring those data points. We're looking at things like insurance, ensuring attendance, and ensuring that if there are any issues around barriers, that we as a school can work with parents on. We do that. So, all of those checkpoints that we're looking at right now, whether it be curriculum data points, or it be attendance data points, or it be discipline data points, we're looking at all of that as we continue to educate the whole child, and always having an open-door policy in that parents should reach out to us, that we recognize that we don't have conferences, and fortunately now, until March, but that our doors are always open, and email, phone calls, whatever we can do to make sure that we are supporting the whole child.
Any questions for Lois?
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. O'Connor?
Good evening. You sound great out here. I can hear every word.
Good.
Welcome to Hampton Academy. Like the other two schools, January's one of those months that we're hoping there's no snow days, but it's really, we get back to work after a long break from the holidays. And as you see, many of the things they're doing align here at the middle school as well. So, you've read my report. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mr. O'Connor?
How did the Giving Tree go?
It went great. I mean, this community during the holidays and actually throughout the school year do a great job in helping those less fortunate. We had plenty, and we shared plenty. But it's a lot of people. It's not just the, not just the staff, but the students chipped in and community members, and always from the charitable organizations in town, they always support us as well.
I understand the Police Association contributed to it, and that Nancy York went out and did all the shopping at the last minute.
It was a last-minute donation by the Patrolman's Association, to be accurate. And we're grateful for that, because there were, there were several more students who we were able to make sure they got something else just at Christmas rather than what they expected, so they got a little bit more.
Give her my thanks, you know, for going above and beyond.
Thank you. I will say that.
Could I ask you to have Ms. Hughes come down? You can introduce her?
Absolutely. She's here. I wasn't sure if she was coming in. So, this is Bridgette Hughes. Bridgette is the interim Assistant Principal here at Hampton Academy. She began officially on January 2nd.
Yep.
And she's gotten her feet wet. She knows the kids, she knows the community, and I think it's been a pretty good transition over the last seven days.
It's been awesome. Yeah, it's been great. So, thank you for allowing me to do it, because it's been fantastic. I miss Center School, but I am having the time of my life. The kids have been great, the staff's been very accommodating. David is phenomenal, so it's been great. So, I really appreciate it. It's been awesome.
Well, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. It's great.
Any other questions for Dave?
I was reminded that Thursday night, the...
Yeah, actually, that's a typo. We actually saw that that Thursday night, it conflicts with the public hearing.
Oh.
And the eighth grade is, you know, they kind of put the spaghetti dinner in there, but they have a calendar fundraiser coming up that's out in the community right now. And so, there's a prize every day for the month of February. So, we decided to go forward. There was a lot of, there was a lot of people wanted spaghetti, but there weren't a lot of cooks.
That's a tough one. Serve it at the public hearing. Be a little messy, but...
Not in the auditorium.
Not in the auditorium. No food in the auditorium. Sorry.
Any...
How big is the cookie at Pat's?
The cookie?
Is it huge?
Mrs. Morrissey and Mrs. Kennedy, they are, they help me coordinate the ski club program, in which we have 145 students this year. They have a ritual where they either get the pot pie, which is very good, or the chocolate-chip cookie, which is about the size of my head, I'm told, yeah. Thank you for asking.
Anything else, Dave?
No, I don't.
Any questions for Mr. O'Connor?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening again. You have my report. Do you have any questions?
It can be misleading when it says that we have not been selected to participate in the New Hampshire DOE Special Education Compliance, but it's only because we're doing so well.
And that's a, that's a good thing. That basically means we're not getting audited next year.
Right. So, congratulations. That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jess?
So, Jess, you have 40 in your preschool right now, and you have a possibility of 12, 11?
Some are, some are in there.
Some are already in there?
Yeah, some are already in there. Yep, yep.
Are you doing a child find? No.
We have to.
You have to.
Twice a year.
So, do you know when that will be?
It's typically the spring. We usually do it in April.
Okay.
Yep. We do one in October and one in April.
Okay.
We have parents calling already.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Greg?
Good evening. How are you?
I'm well, thanks.
Any questions for my report?
Well, thank you for helping do all this.
No problem. It's been exciting. And we've still got little glitches. I'm getting reports that sound is a little, like, almost like a stutter, so we'll have to look into that tomorrow. The people that are watching it have sent messages to various people, so...
Say that again?
The sound, I guess, is over the live, over TV, is like a little bit of a stutter, I guess, to it. I was, I verified it from my phone as well, because we can watch it live over the internet at our website now as well. So, I pulled it up and then put the volume down so it wouldn't disturb you guys, but went back and talked to John. His wife said the same thing, that the sound currently over live is a little bit of a stutter. So, we'll look into that tomorrow and find out what's going on, so...
Okay. So, the people who are watching this at home, bear with us. We will get the technical difficulties straightened out.
Yep. We've got to work out the little bumps in the road, so... But everything else seems to be going great, so...
Anything else for us? Any questions for Mr. Lynn Paris?
We'll be ready for Thursday when we go live out of the auditorium on Thursday as well.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Now, just, are you setting that up, or is the town setting that up?
We're setting it up. The town will be coming in with the devices there, so they can also go live over 22. So, we'll be able to be live over 22 and 13 at the same time.
Same time?
Same time.
Wow. Thank you. You have any other directives?
Here.
Okay. Superintendent's report?
Thank you. Tonight, I'd ask that you accept donations, the following donations from Marston School. $480 from Life Touch School... from Marston School, $480 from Life Touch School Portrait, from Center School, $805 from Geskis Studios, and the district, $5,000 from the Bletzer family, and two $500 checks from the Hampton Rotary Club.
Do I have a motion to accept all of those? Pepper? Seconded? Frank? Any discussion? All those in favor? That's very, very generous from that family.
Yeah, people have been incredibly generous over the holidays and continues. That isn't just the holidays. It happens all year round. So it's really heartening to see the support that families have in town. Also, in your packet this evening is the results of the audit that was done at Hampton Academy from Homeland Security. They came down. I think we've praised you of that. Mr. Lassard was involved, the SRO's Chief, Deputy Chief Hobbs, David O'Connor, myself. We all sat with the folks from Homeland Security, did an audit of all policies and so forth. And then they toured the building. They walked all over the building checking out various security items. I think we did very well. They gave us some recommendations, some minor recommendations, actually. One was making sure that when people come in the building and have their ID tags, they return them to the office so we know they've left. That's a, you know, and sometimes people take a side door and don't come back. So we're trying, the front office is doing a great job at collecting those. Also, making sure that when we do have various drills, that the room is secure in terms of visibility. I'll leave it at that. We also, this is interesting one. They would like us to have more speakers outside. That has been somewhat problematic for us in terms of the neighbors, but we'll use good discretion on that. But there is occasion when the kids are out and they've evacuated the building. And in this, in the case of Hampton Academy, where Mr. O'Connor has to provide them with direction, and we're going to use it. We're going to use it. We don't use it for, you know, daily announcements. That's, that's not there. But we will have to make sure that there's good sound all over the building. They're making recommendations. They didn't find this to be a fault, but making sure that we check radios, that all of our radios are working. They also want us to try to make sure that our radios and our communication equipment is tied into agencies. That would be the fire department, that would be the police department. So we're working with them to make sure that they get all of our communication should we need to. And some of these, some of these recommendations will hold true at Center and Marston. They just haven't had their audits yet. They will. I suspect that he'll be back in the spring. Suggestion about emergency plan for the community room. We need to make sure that we have information there so that people know where and how to evacuate. If they can't go out the door that leads them right outside, but they have to go in inside the building, then we need to make sure that we have good direction there in the community room. And then we will continue to do the federal and national testing that's done around emergency management. All of our administrators have done that in the past, and we will continue to do that. It's a good visit. They were very positive. And I think that the security has been addressed very well at Hampton Academy. I don't know if you have any questions on that.
Will you be talking to the neighbors and letting them know?
Yeah, we need to do that. And they're very cognizant of what goes on here. So David has a great relationship with the neighbors. And so when we are going to do some, using the loudspeakers, we have to alert them. So that's a great point, Andrea.
Were we able to help the neighbors in the lighting situation?
Yeah, that's a great point. Yeah, we did. We actually did several things with the lighting. We reduced the illumination of the bulbs. That was the first thing we did. Then we put in some, and you can hardly see it, but it's a little panel that blocks the light from flashing out further towards the homes. And the last piece that just was done over the holiday was we have dimmer switches so that out in the parking lot, we can dim those lights, especially at night when no one is here. No basketball, no hearings, no meetings. So we have the ability to do that. So I think we addressed those issues. There were some concerns. We lost a couple of trees in all of the work that was done. And so we'll, but we have warranty on all that. It's a year warranty, all the trees, and will be replaced by the company that put them in. There's a few that we lost.
We do need to speak to the selectmen at some point regarding maybe replacing some trees that were lost on that side of the road. So just giving a heads up.
They cut down pine trees, and people feel like they, they're really wide open now. That may have had an effect on the light, I think, because we had nothing to block it. So that they are most interested in seeing if we couldn't replace some of the foliage along that road, along that side of the street. There's plenty on the Hampton side, the Hampton Academy side. So. In terms of our goal around equity, we continue to work with the Office of Civil Rights to respond to the civil rights of our, of our, one of our students. In your policy, we have, in your policy section tonight, we have two policies. One is a Title VI Discrimination Complaint Policy, which I think is important. I have to tell you that I did a lot of searching to find this policy in New Hampshire. There was not many districts, even the State School Board Association didn't have anything. So we worked on a draft that we found, and we'll have it checked, but we'll get to that later in the meeting. Other than that, I did want to take a few minutes. Mr. DeLuca requested some information on Title II. So I took the liberty of making copies of our grant this year so that you could, is there two there? Is there enough? We've got one?
No.
Just a quick review of Title II. This year, we received a grant, got to get the right one, of $46,319. That has been a significant decrease. The federal government has really cut back recently on Title II, which is, as you know, our professional development money. In addition, you have to, when you look at that number, the $46,000, please be aware that Sacred Heart, through the equity piece in the federal grants, must receive money if the principal desires to be a part of it. And she does. She's always comes over, meets with Jess and I. And they're eligible for $6,253 of that $46,000. So it gives us about $40,000 to spend. This year, in our Title II grant, we have an activity with demonstrated success. We've been working with them for several years, doing, I think you heard it tonight from the principals, we work with them around data and the curriculum. They do embedded professional development with our teachers. That happens both at Hampton Academy this year and Marston. Center was ready to move on. They didn't need that service. So they chose not to, in a different direction. But Marston and Hampton Academy are continuing. We also have, the math department this summer approached me. I met with them several times over the summer. They asked if they could attend the National Math Conference. They've been working hard for the last two years on updating their math curriculum and actually have shown some terrific progress in math here at Hampton Academy, and asked if they could attend as a team. And I wrote that activity into the Title II grant. Again, that was their request. When I do, when we do the grants at the office, we always try to reach out and see what people need, teachers, as well as our administrators. And so I work with them, and they give me their suggestions. We also sent one person to the Behavioral Intervention Team Conference. As you recall, we had a presentation at our last meeting, the SAU 2190 Joint Effort around Behavioral Interventions. So we sent, Mrs. Parsons went representing our, we were scheduled to send two, but one person could not go. We also had an activity, the music teachers finished their curriculum. This year, they spent two years working on curriculum, materials, resources, really updating their curriculum. And as we have in the past, we've given opportunity for our teachers to attend. They attended in the fall, they attended a national conference for music teachers. And again, that was funded through federal funds. Every summer, we talked about this today, actually. We talked about responsive classroom. And we're very fortunate that Sue Antico, our guidance counselor, school counselor over at Marston, is a trained responsive classroom trainer. And so every summer, Sue does training. She came to me, asked me to write that activity into the grant to pay for that, that training for teachers over the summer. Usually around 20 teachers, 20 to 25 teachers participate every summer in training around responsive classroom. And the last one is, the last activity that's in here for this year is training for reading. We are, our elementary teachers, both at, right now, we've sent three staff members. All three of them are from Marston, but this grant will continue throughout the year and into next year. So we have plenty of money. So that's how we spend our grant. It's pretty much driven by staff and by our administrators. Can I answer any other questions? Is that, is that, is that what you were looking for? Frank?
Well, I sent a second request, and Mariah got back to me, but there's some concerns I have, and I'll address them in a moment.
A second request of information?
Additional information, yeah. And you provided it. Thanks.
Okay.
Okay.
While the superintendent is finding her place, Greg, I had one, a quick question for you. I know you're replacing the Promethean boards.
Yes.
What do you do with the old, the old ones?
Thank you. You reminded me of something I wanted to bring up with you. The Promethean, the old smart boards are not worth anything. I had a recycling company come in to get rid of some other old equipment. And we have a lot of the old boards sitting in the, in the SAU office. And I asked them, would they recycle them? They said, well, nobody wants projectors and smart boards anymore, and there's actually a cost involved. So trying to minimize the hit to my budget, I said, well, let's hold on to that for now, because maybe there's a use somewhere in the community if we get the okay from you to either sell them or donate them. I'd hate to just pay money to get rid of them at this point. But they're sitting in the SAU office stacked up with some, they're not extreme short throws. We went from one version in District, which was a short throw, which has a long arm that puts the projector back about four or five feet and leaves more of a shadow. And over time, we eventually went to the extreme short throw. So we've been replacing the short throws in District with the extreme short throws. So now we have extra short throw projectors in arms and the boards sitting in the SAU offices. We don't really have a use for them. So I'd love to get the okay from you guys to either seek to donate or to sell them. That's something that isn't a data privacy issue. It's harder when it comes to things like a computer, because then it has to be wiped, and there's operating systems involved that we put on as a business operating system that would have to be removed and put a home one on. And we don't have that still readily available. It's a lot of work to get that. So we usually just donate computers. But when it comes to things that we don't have to wipe out data, we don't have to put a lot of work like this, there's an opportunity to have that discussion. What do we do with it? There's also iPads in District that also end of life. They're iPad 2s, which no longer can be updated. So there's almost over 100 of those in District that are stacked up right now, looking to be recycled. There was an opportunity to get some money for that. I could have easily given them to the recycling company, and they would have given me a minimal amount of money. But I've had a couple of vendors approach me about buying those back from me. So anywhere from $5, depending on the condition, if there's scratches and broken screens, which most of ours are in really good condition. So I would assume we'd get near the top of dollar for that. But top dollar without a power supply, because most of them went missing as we had carts to plug them in and charge them over time, we'd mostly get at most $22 per iPad. So you can expect, they said on average, about $1,400 for the iPads we have, up to possibly $3,000 that could come back into District to offset some of the expenses in my department.
Perhaps for the next board meeting, you can bring us kind of a list of the inventory that you have.
Sure.
Possible ways that you're going to recycle it or not, or whatever. And we can make any vote that we need to make. And it doesn't have to be for every single one of them. It could just be, you know, 50 of the iPads or something like that.
Yeah, no, I mean, generally, we have, with all the Chromebooks we've brought in, literally over 100 sitting in storage right now that I'm looking to move somewhere. So I'll get you an exact amount. I have a paperwork actually sitting on my desk that, with getting this live tonight, I just forgot about bringing it, to pass it out to you. But from one company that has given me a quote. That number could change by next month. So just be aware of that. I can try and get an updated one for next month, but...
That'd be great. Thank you. I'm sorry. I meant to ask that when you were standing there.
That's all right. Thank you for bringing that up.
I'm sorry.
No, that's great. Greg and I have talked about that, to what we're going to do. So that's good discussion. Just a quick enrollment report. It's in your packet. On January 1, it was 1,090. Today, we lost four youngsters. It's 1,086. Numbers are pretty much staying steady, as you see them on the, on your, on your sheet. With the biggest change being in the preschool population, everywhere.
Seacoast Online just did an article on Sunday's paper about the lack of affordable, I mean, the lack of childcare and preschools.
Well, we are waiting, we are waiting word from the Department of Ed. My understanding is New Hampshire received a $26 million grant for early learning. So I've met with Jess, and we are waiting to get some detail on it so that, but from what I read, some of the money will be used at the state level, but there will be grants out to districts. So I'm hoping that that's something that we will have an opportunity to participate in. Other than that, I think I've covered everything.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, finances? Mariah?
Yeah, so the new year is started. 2019 is done. So my department is getting the W-2s, 1095s, health insurance reports out and ready. Trying to get that done before the next payroll. With that, we also have some new reporting for the year. New Hampshire retirement for retirees, their report is brand new and needs to be done. So that will take a little bit of time to learn the new process. So we're plugging away, ending the year to start the new year. With that said, we're also trying to clean up the system and for the new year, and have talked to all the secretaries, and they are getting, trying to get the rest of what they know encumbered before March. So any of the field trips, any of the stuff that's coming down prior, so that we can have everything encumbered by March. So I can really do a cleanup in April and May and have it more knowledgeable yet this year and for audit purposes. So we're trying to get ahead of the game this year. So all three secretaries at the schools are really working hard to see what they did last year, clean up what they have left, and see what's outstanding, and try to close whatever we need to for the year. So December looks about where it should be. Next month, you might see a lot more encumbered, pretty much whatever needs to be encumbered for the rest of the year, school year.
Any questions for Mariah? Frank?
I'm looking at the budget balance in some selected accounts, i.e. special ed, and showing a negative balance that you're projected. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
I think you've got it in special ed, and then you've got it in transportation.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it was my understanding that when we did the budget, that a lot of this was basically looked at and projected out. Why are we back into a projected negative budget? When we did the budget last year, and we just did it this year. So are we looking at a continued negative balance in special ed moving forward?
If we have the students that are in, being participated, yes. It's, I mean, it can go up and down. And it's encumbered. So... go up and down. And it's encumbered. So what we have is encumbered. So all the tuition's encumbered. Does it mean that what we have encumbered will actually be spent?
Mm-hmm.
We won't know that until we get billed. We, we take the student, how many days we think they're going to be located at the, at tuition, and that's what we have for the year. So if it does, if they don't go, or if they, we no longer need to tuition them out, it can vary. So it's an encumber. It does not mean, last year, we encumbered a negative, and it was at the end, at the end of the day, it was not.
On our projected, on our budget for 2020, 2021, what does that look like as compared to your projected cost analysis for 1920?
We added, I want to say 75,000 in special ed.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at a negative of, you're projected, of 367, 514, and then in transportation, 118.
As a whole, or is that just one location?
That's just one location.
Yeah. So, um...
I mean, there are other locations, but, you know, we're...
Well, if it's at one location, so if, depending on, depending on which item you're looking at, the budget may not be in that line. It might be at just one school, because when we put the budget in, in the budget book, it's at one location. And when we encumber, we encumber where the students actually are. So you may have one school showing positive of all the money, and then the negatives of the other.
Okay.
Because the, the budget is in that one.
All right. But last year, we had a negative overall, if I remember, when we had to put money in. Or it came out of some bottom line. All right. We just did the budget for 2020, 2021. Can we look at a comparison of that budget that we projected versus what, what you're anticipating costs are, so we can see if we're going to fall into a shortfall for the coming year?
So, yes. So special ed, so when you're looking, I, I would just like to know which account you're actually looking at, so that I can see if it...
What page is it, Frank?
It's on, okay. Well, the transportation is page 10, halfway up, or halfway down, whichever you want to look at it. And it looks like MS Marston. The 368, let me go back here. Page was that? Is page 2, about two-thirds of the way down, and it looks like Hampton Academy.
It's not, it's not over. So if you look in the center...
What page are you on, Mariah?
10.
Okay.
Um, so when, when I did this report, this is new to you guys. I don't take this, and I don't manipulate it. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
We had discussed that on some of these items, we don't know, when we're doing the budget, we don't know where this money is going to be. If it's going to be at the academy, if it's going to be at center, we don't know. So we pick one location. And the location of the transportation, that budget, is at the academy. So if you look at center and Marston, they have zero for a budget. So their spending is, is going to be in the negative. If you look at the academy line, you have 163 positive. And if you take the Marston and the center out of that, you're still 43 ahead in transportation.
Well, shouldn't we have a, a better formula, so each school is actual? I mean, if you're showing that, you're showing Marston down 118, you're showing the academy plus 163. Shouldn't there be a balancing act? So they're both...
Well, I would have to ask you every time to come in and make a GL, a budget adjustment. So when we do the budget, if you look at the budget book, it's one actual account. But when we break it down, we're trying to track it so that we know where the students are. So we know if it's at the academy center. So we, so I would have to take that money and come in and ask you to transfer the budget every time. Which we could, but at the end of the day, it's...
But you could do it on a quarterly basis, or we have nine months in a school, so you can do it on a trimester basis. That'd give us a more accurate number.
But...
Well, don't...
At the end of the day, the balance is still 43.
Right. Don't we have an accurate number?
It's 43,000.
Yeah, it's 43.
43,000 overall for the three schools.
Right.
And much of the transportation has been encumbered. When she does the, when a student is placed out of district, the, when the purchase order comes through, it comes through for their projected for the year. So that's the amount of money that she encumbers. The problem is, is that we put transportation in one line when you did your budget.
Right.
And then what Mariah's done is said, wait a minute, there's some kids from center there, and there's some kids from Marston, but we didn't have any money there. It was all in one line, which we associated with Hampton Academy.
No, but when you look at it, it looks...
It, it, it does, but you got to look at the bottom line, which is the 43,000 to the, to the block.
Right. And that's the, that's under the third line, under the function, which gives you your total for that actual budget.
Right.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mariah? You were all set.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I guess we're on 11-1, which is your policy J, J I C K. And the three of you folks worked on it?
Jess, Carson Stig.
And Jess? Okay. Now...
Do you want to go over it, Andrea?
I think we should maybe just mention the things that we've added.
Yes. Right, right.
I'll let you take it.
Okay. So the first thing that was added was, and you saw this at your last meeting, was a definition for emotional distress. It was not there. It was not well-defined. So in the policy, we added, for the purpose of this policy, the term emotional distress means distress that materially impairs the student's participation in academic or other school-sponsored activities. The term emotional distress does not include the unpleasantness or discomfort that accompanies an unpopular viewpoint. So it's really, the key to that for you to think about is, is that it materially impairs the student's participation in academic or other school-sponsored activities. That we use for definition for emotional distress. That's the first thing that the committee wanted you to be aware of. The second is under, on page 67, under staff and volunteers. All staff will be provided with a copy of this policy annually, which we've done. And, this is the new part now, any organization providing activities to students in the Hampton School District will be required to abide by the policy and acknowledge that it is read and reviewed. And I have a typo there. I just noticed it. Did you notice that?
Yeah, yeah.
Reviewed? I'll, I'll get that corrected. I'm hoping that you'll let us go back one more time with this policy and not accept it tonight.
Right. This was supposed to be a second read, but we need to do it again.
Yeah, we want to make sure we get it right. And then it also says that the superintendent will ensure that all school employees, volunteers, and community, community members receive annual training on bullying and related district policies. So we will make sure that we have an opportunity for parents and the community to understand the policy and to, you know, discuss the implications of it. I did talk to Renee at your, asked me to do that, Director of Recreation here in Hampton, and he, he was 100% supportive of helping us making sure that this information gets out to all the coaches and the HYA. And, you know, we have people who use our facilities all the time, and everyone will have this. And this will be attached. The policy will be attached to the use of facilities.
So for instance, a group like the Girl Scouts, if they're using a building, can they fill out forms here, or do they have to refer it to us?
Well, they, they don't have to refer it to us. That's not our job. I mean, they need to do that in their organization. But we can certainly help them. And we'll, we would do that when we do, you know, training and community events. They, they could, if they so chose, they could, they could use our forms, you know, our reporting forms. I'd be happy to share that with them, because I suspect they don't have anything.
I suspect they don't.
Yeah, I'm just not sure about them. So...
What are the repercussions for the organization, such as the Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, HYA, utilizing our gym, if they don't follow the policy? When an incident occurs?
I, I would think that if we find an organization is not following the policies, they won't be able, able to use our facilities. I was just thinking off the top of my head.
Maybe we need to say that.
Do you think that that should be included in that?
That's a good point. Maybe that should be included.
Peppa's got it down for us to review. That, that's why we wanted to do this tonight, so you had another chance to...
It's, it's a requirement for using the facility.
Yeah. Oh, I know that. And I also know human nature, and it's like, you know.
Is it, can I continue? So on page 73 was a change. There was around communication with parents upon completion of investigation, that within 24 hours, not two days, we, we deleted that. The recommendation is of the invest, of completing the investigation. The principal will notify the students involved in person of his or her findings and the result of the investigation. And then the principal will send a letter and notify via telephone the parents of the alleged victim, alleged perpetrator of the results of the investigation. The principal will also send a letter to the parents within 24 hours of notifying them of the results. So we really tightened that up, so there was no lapse of time, you know, or gap in, in what happened and the results, and getting it to the, to the kids as well, the students as well as the families. Okay?
What about administrators?
Can you clarify that?
Sure. If they, if, and let's say a parent is concerned about something, brings it forward to an administrator, and the administrator doesn't follow up.
Then they would go to the superintendent. I mean...
In the policy?
And you're, you're suggesting that administrator doesn't follow the policy. That, that's an issue that I have with them as, as for supervision. I mean, there has to be, that, there could be other policies, if not just this bullying policy, any policy.
Specifically?
Well, I'm, I'm, all I'm saying is, is that would hold true for any policy, not just the bullying policy. There's an expectation that it's very clear that they have an obligation to investigate. They have an obligation. And if, if in fact, being supervised by the superintendent, and they didn't, then there are consequences for them. And it becomes a personnel issue.
But it shouldn't be, shouldn't be stated in the policy?
I don't think we have to, because it goes, it goes on the assumption that our administrators and staff know these policies. And when they sign their contract with SAU 90, they agree to adhere by these policies.
And we review this policy every single year. That I've been here, that policy has been done. So, go ahead.
You have a, a, at the start of the school year, you have workshops.
Yes.
Okay.
End of the year and the beginning of the year.
Now, let's just talk about the beginning of the year, when we have new teachers, et cetera, et cetera. Is this, are you going to incorporate this as one of the key aspects when you have new teachers and...
You know that we have a three-day orientation, and a whole afternoon session is devoted to policy. And so I, I do that myself. We talk about the bullying policy. We talk about child abuse policy. We talk about the drug and alcohol policy. All the policies relevant that they need to be aware of. On top of that, the building administrators also at their opening in faculty meetings, when they have their opening, review those policies that are really critical to their everyday work.
Okay. So this policy...
Absolutely.
...won't be reiterated at the beginning of the school year?
It will be reiterated in June, and it will be reiterated again in, in the, in the fall. Okay? The, the last piece, am I right, Andrea? The last piece of the policy is a, it's a matrix. And it's broken up into two sections. One is called the elementary. And it's, if a student engages in harassment, threats, or intimidation against a pupil, groups of pupil or staff. Okay? So this would be a perpetrator. We have code of violation. So if you look at the sheet, that is the matrix, you'll, I'm using elementary. Engage in any activity that demonstrates an imbalance of power. Engage in an act of cyberbullying. And a engage in an act of bullying based on sexual orientation. Engaged in bullying based on ethnicity or race. Engaged in bullying based on physical or mental disability. And then we have, what would the possible consequences be for a student who violates this bully policy? Let me give you an example. Let's say a student engages in cyberbullying. The, on the first offense, in grades K through 3, all right? So we would restrict activities. We would assign detention. We would, the principal could do a one-day suspension. If that happened again, they could do, again, kind of reiterate that. Again, we're talking about young kids. Third offense, restrict activity, assign detention, one-day suspension. If it continues, we would, the, the principal could have a five-day suspension, contact the school police, possible expulsion, and alternative educational environment. So we kind of, the, we, we kind of thought about building it up, you know, helping the kids to understand that they, that, that's just not acceptable behavior. And the consequences are going to become more severe if, if there's repetition. That was what we were trying to think, trying to, you know. Then we have one for grades 4 through 5, which is a little bit, grades 4 and 5, which is a little bit more severe. And then we also wanted to talk about interventions. You know, this policy, it, it's going to be consequences, and we all agree to that. The principals all agree. By the way, the principals reviewed this. And I gave a copy of it to the guidance counselors. But like, kids in grade 5, K through 5, meet with a counselor, identify contributing factors, develop a behavior contract, parent attends school. I personally, that's my, one of my favorites. I think sometimes that, I've done it in middle school and had a parent come in and spend the day with their child. And, you know, it does have an impact. And it shows that the school and the parents are working together. So we've, again, I look to the principals to, to, this is kind of a menu for them, based on the incident, based on what happened, because they need to have, I, I wrote it down below, any action taken are at the discretion of the building administrator or they designate. If you flip your page on the backside of that matrix, I have the same kind of formula for grade 6 through 8, but I think you'll see that on the first offense, assign a detention, restrict activity, three-day suspension, and contract, contact SRO, School Resource Officer. And then it, it builds all the way across. You asked that we look at this, and Jess was, did some research too. As you know, Jess attended some workshops through Primex in the fall, and has brought back some really good information. Pepper, Andrea, did I miss anything?
No. Could you just explain a little bit more about the Title VI complaint and investigation?
Oh, yeah. I haven't gotten to that. That's a separate policy.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah.
All right. So on the policy that we were just talking about, which is J, J I C K, can I get a motion to table this?
Michael motion to table it.
Moved Frank. Seconded. Ginny?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor? So we'll table this until the next meeting.
Are there any other suggestions, advice? I, I heard from Mrs. Cochrane tonight and took notes. If, if there is anything, please, just, we'll meet again, Pepper and Andrea, to do this. So the second policy that I asked, that we did not have, we have a discrimination policy that you know. It's AC. I think it's one of the first policies in your book, right?
Right.
And it talks about Title VI. And that's obviously discrimination based... And it talks about Title VI, and that's obviously discrimination based on race and religion, ethnic background, sexual orientation. But there was no way for somebody to, what do you use to complain? How can I, I got a concern, I want to put it in writing, I need to do that. So, we went, you can see the first page is, we haven't done it yet in policy form, so I'm just asking you tonight, this is the very, very first read, if you would take time, review this, and then, and look at the complaint form. This is the form that a parent, that a parent or teacher or a student, anybody could fill out. And please take a look at that, and, but this really came out of some of the work that we have been doing with Office of Civil Rights. And I heard that in some of the discussions, and so, I wanted to get a bit of a jump on it and put something for you to see. And both Pepper and Andrea supported that, so...
So, we don't have to take any action on this right now?
No, not tonight.
Okay.
But again, I would...
And it will be brought back as a policy, you think?
Yes, yes, sir.
Minutes of December 10. Motion to accept?
I'm making a motion to...
Frank, second? Ginny? Discussion? Pepper, you are excused. All those in favor? All right, that's 400. And I believe we need to go into non-public.
Do new business?
Okay.
A quick new business thing. I would just like to, as we discussed at the beginning of the year, and I know we discussed it at the end of last year, I would like to either make a recommendation or a motion that we allow the grade 6 and grade 7 students to attend the Hammond Castle and their Canterbury Lake trip the first week in June. Those places, especially Hammond Castle, you cannot go till after Labor Day. I know it goes in line with their...
Labor Day?
What?
Memorial Day?
Sorry, Memorial Day, that's what I meant. I would just like to either make that recommendation or make that a proposal.
Right, don't we have a new policy that we put in place?
Was it a policy, or was it a recommendation?
It's a policy that we did to alleviate any of that.
Okay, then I guess I would like to...
Support their trip.
Support their trip, and maybe adjust the policy, so that they could take those trips the first week in June.
It allows that. I'll get you, when you come in, I'll get you a copy.
I thought we had discussed it in September, and I wasn't sure if we had...
We said that we didn't put it in, do you remember?
Right.
Pepper, you were...
So, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is that we put it in?
No, you don't have to put anything in, because it doesn't, it doesn't not allow them to go in the first week in June. There's no language, or there's no...
It's out.
It's out.
So, they can go to Canterbury Lake in June?
Yeah, the only thing that we required was advanced notice on the situation.
Vote for it. We would have to sus, wouldn't we have to suspend the policy?
No, because...
No, the policy already allows it.
Right.
Right, so that's what I said.
I think the policy states that we need to have some advanced notice on that, not last minute.
No, only the overnights.
Oh, overnight.
Yeah, you don't, you don't, I mean...
Maybe you should give all of us the policy.
I could bring every field trip to you, but it would be a lot.
Maybe we need to review that policy. I guess I got confused after September.
You know what, Andrea, when we meet, I'll show you the policy.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Because you did all that in the fall.
I know we did, and then I was thinking back to it and thinking...
That's all right, there's a lot of stuff going on, that's all right.
Did we make a decision? Did we finally decide?
Any other new business? We need to go into non-public under, and we have quite a bit to do in non-public, under RSA 91A:3, Roman numeral 2, A through E. Roll call, Frank?
Yes.
Pepper?
Aye.
Ginny?
Aye.
Aye.